recorded by Whitman Hansen Community Access Television. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hi, Pledge of Allegiance, two of fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Mr. Gill, we have a jam-packed agenda, but before we get to that, may I prevail upon you to read the announcements?
I see that it's on page three, which is very uncommon.
Okay.
We are looking for citizens at large to become members of the following committees: Bylaw Committee, Cable and Internet Committee, Community Preservation Committee, Capital Improvement Committee, Cultural Council, Economic Development Committee, Energy Committee, Historical Commission, Maquon Reuse Committee, Memorial Day and Patriotic Observance Committee, Recreation Commission, and Zoning Board of Appeals. Volunteer applications may be found at the town website, www.hansen-mass.gov, or by calling the Select Board's office at 781-293-2131. This is a reminder that all elected boards, committees, commissions must reorganize at their first meeting after town election and report that reorganization to the town's clerk's office. The Hanson Historical Society is having an annual strawberry festival on Friday, June 14th, I'm sorry, 2024, at the Schoolhouse Number Four, 563 Main Street, Route 27, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. Price is still $8. Also, starting Friday, June 14th, the town clerk's office will be closed all day on Fridays for the summer. And then upcoming meetings, for everybody to remind, there's a special town meeting June 17th, 2024, and our next Select Board meeting is June 25th, 2024.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Gill. So, we're going to jump right to it. We're going to take things out of order, and we're going to talk about the special town meeting warrant preview. So, Mr. Kinship, do you mind taking the Inquisition chair for a moment? Thanks. So... And Kevin, I didn't know if you wanted to, you know, as our financial dynamic duo, if you guys wanted to...
So, I'll just keep like, just a brief overview. So, the way I'm looking at this warrant is, there's going to be an opportunity to amend what was already voted on the budget. So, in order for us to fund the $372,001.41 for the Whitman Hansen appropriation, the FinCom has recommended $207,000 in budget cuts. The use of an old article for purchase of Maquon Street, I think that's called the Sleeper Street property, I'm not definitely...
Yes, Sleeper property, yep.
Yeah, so that's for $126,000. And then, the local aid senate, Ways and Means version, showed an extra $38,000 coming to Hanson. So basically, those three revenue sources were going to fund the Whitman Hansen appropriation. That was what FinCom has recommended. So there's a column for finance committee recommendations, and then, obviously, the Select Board can opine and weigh in.
Well, I'm hoping we align, because that's my ideal scenario, but I don't know if that will happen, but, you know, hope springs eternal.
So, I will just say, if you look at the sheet, we presented it as Option One is what the populace has voted at town meeting and at the ballot. So that would be the 5% and super town meeting, so you'll see that as Option One. And then Option Two is, should town meeting decide they want to fund the school at the higher level, we've pre-made all the cuts. So the way Eric and I were going over the article, the way it's written, unless I'm incorrect, to keep it the way it is, would be Option One, you would vote no.
Okay.
Because it's a vote to rescind.
No, no.
Okay.
Okay. If you want to keep the budget the way that it is...
Right.
The motion is going to be to accept the reduced budget for Whitman Hansen Regional School District. That's the way the motion will be read, which will be read by Mr. Keely. Thank you. If you want to stay the course, then you vote yes to that. If you don't want to stay the course and you want to make cuts, then you vote no to that, but you'd be voting yes to Option Two, if we get to that, if there's not a majority vote for one. We went through this with our town council, we did.
It seems very confusing when you read it.
It is, it is confusing. I wanted to do it as multiple articles. We were told, no, we shouldn't do that, so we're taking up the advice of council.
Okay, I think as long as it's clear to the voters...
We're going to have an explanation, and I know Sean, Kate wanted to make sure that you guys are aligned and that you are clear about the motions and, you know, and the language and all that, so hopefully you guys will be able to connect. Okay, all right. So, okay.
So Option One is to leave it as is.
Correct.
And then Option Two is, as you can see, if you go down, the Option Two has the adjusted amounts, but in the FinCom recommendation, you can see where we exactly made the cuts.
So just to put it a different way, and I said this at our last meeting, instead of coming thinking, what am I voting against, you're coming to say, which of these options am I coming to vote for?
Sure.
So if you look at it through that lens, I think it makes it simpler than...
Can I say, the other thing, doesn't number one also you have to reopen the budget?
You have to reopen the budget. That's why the word rescind is there, because you have to rescind the vote in order to take the vote.
Whatever the lawyers say works.
In order to change it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. You didn't live through our very painful last meeting, so...
Nope.
We don't want to, we don't want to live through it again, please, I think of you...
That'll definitely be Kate's problem, and as long as, you know, I feel as long as it's explained plainly at town meeting, we should get it.
Yep. Okay, so can we just kind of go through where you're proposing the cuts? And then Eric, if you can chime in, are there any differences that you're aware of between the proposed cuts that FinCom is suggesting and what you've suggested and Lisa is suggesting to us to...
No, because it was worked collaboratively.
Okay, all right.
And then, you know, Kevin presented his committee, and his committee went through that budget like a fine hooptom.
Okay. All right, so shall we just lay it up?
Sure.
Okay. And again, this is if people at town meeting decide they want to fully fund the Whitman Hansen Regional School District. And there seems to be a narrative that this can be done without a tax increase. Well, it certainly can, but it can't be done without cuts.
Right.
Something in our budget needs to get cut. We need to get money from the budget.
Yes.
Okay.
So, I will say, the first area we looked at, we looked at spreading cuts across all the town departments with the exception of public safety.
Okay.
We thought it was important that the police and fire remain fully staffed. We're finally up to where they are, and the rest of the town would have to work the cuts for now.
And not only that, I would also say that both chiefs have expressed that, given the new growth that we've got, that they are very thinly staffed and about to be understaffed.
Yes. So first, reduction would be under selectman administration salaries. It would be a reduction in the administrative assistant from 19 to 15 hours.
Okay.
Next would be 141 assessor salaries, a reduction from 32 hours to 25 hours for a part-time position.
Yep.
145 treasurer collector salaries, reduce hours of part-time from 19 to 15. 155 information system salaries, reduction for, it was budgeted for a part-time IT position, which isn't being filled. 171 conservation commission salaries, reduction in the conservation agent from 35 to 25 hours. For a total general government reduction of $78,795. Public safety, we left untouched. The schools, you'll see the increase there for Whitman Hansen. Public Works, 420 salaries, opt not to fill a senior highway equipment operator, which is currently not filled, and we haven't been able to fill it so far, so we're going to let it go, stay vacant. 430 solid waste salaries, could be a reduction of $21,670, and it would be a reduction in the transfer station from five days to four days.
Okay.
Unhuman services, 511 health salaries, reduction of 35 hours to 30 for the administrative assistant, and reduction in the health agent from 35 to 25.
Okay.
543 veteran services, veteran service officers requested a part-time hours, so it was an easy reduction there.
And I do want to just make sure that we emphasize, this is not us cutting the veterans' agent.
No.
He, prior to this, had requested a reduction in hours.
With no loss of services.
Yep.
Library and Recreation, 610 library salaries, a reduction of clerical support staff, that would bring $14,274. And then, if you go all the way to the bottom, you'll see sort of the sources of revenue. There's an anticipated, there's $38,000 of increase in local aid from the State House, so that is part of the revenue. And then, as Eric mentioned, we're going to reappropriate $126,947 from Article Four of the 2022 special town meeting.
Okay.
So those are the cuts we proposed, as the town accountant discussed, sort of in collaboration with the town administrator himself and the FinCom. So, any questions on those?
No, and I, no. Did you guys have any questions on any of those? No? Okay. And then, can you help us walk through this increase in local aid? Because a couple of meetings ago, I had mentioned that some of the numbers were out, and, you know, it was a matter of the House and Senate coordinating and, you know, fine tuning, et cetera, et cetera. And that was going to be a boon to Hanson potentially, if those numbers stuck for the increase in the reimbursement for busing and the per pupil of roughly $190,000. I had reached out to Beth Stafford to see if they would take another look at, you know, if they would reconsider the budget in light of that, because that's $190,000. And she felt uncomfortable doing that because it wasn't on lockdown, which I understood. But I guess my question is, if they're uncomfortable doing that, why would we be comfortable hedging a bet that we're going to get that $38,000?
Well, the honest answer is, we need the money. The second answer is, I was looking at the history. The governor's budget was, it's on restricted local aid, was one number, and then another number was the same. The House reduced it by $38,000, and the Senate increased it by $38,000. So it is a little bit of a roll of the dice, but, I mean, we...
Yeah, we were in a meeting today, part of the Association of Town Finance Committees for the State with the Lieutenant Governor, and they seemed to say that that was a certainty, that that was going back, so...
Okay. All right, and talk to us about Whitman Hansen Regional School District stabilization, our general stabilization, and our free cash, and why we wouldn't be touching that for any of this.
Okay. So first of all, we have $627,000 of unexpended free cash. So the reason we don't want to touch any of that is, this year's budget, the operating budget used $794,000 of free cash. So we're going to have to kind of, if we don't have $794,000 of free cash next year, you know, there's a problem. So I don't want to touch that. School stabilization fund, I know I got a couple calls, there's $212,000 in the school stabilization fund, but back in October of 2014, special town meeting, it explicitly states that those funds are supposed to be used for capital projects. So that's one. The second thing is, the capital committee, they, I think they deferred Whitman Hansen's capital request. They are going to have capital requests in October.
Oh, that's true, yes.
So that would be a potential funding source for that. And that would, we always fund it with free cash, but that will probably save it. So, I mean, that's a responsible thing to do.
Because actually, several town meetings have deferred some of the capital requests.
Yeah, and I think this is one of them. I think I did talk with one of the Whitman Hansen School community members...
Yeah, Dawn Byers.
Dawn Byers. I talked to her on the phone, and she said their intent is to have capital projects at this October special town meeting. So that would be a funding source for that. A stabilization fund is like $1,459,000 right now. So that's basically what we're going to be going into FY '25 with and FY '26. And I do want to mention that, I know there's no public safety cuts per se, but we did talk to both chiefs, and they did settle their contracts. And, you know, basically, they felt that they could absorb any contractual increases with the budget that was already voted. So to me, that's, okay, so that's kind of where we're at right now, and...
In a way, they took cuts because we didn't take it from another source.
Right. So that's where we stand now. We're going to have to have October special town meeting anyway to make any last-minute adjustments and so forth, because I talked with Lee about the new growth. Because the new growth estimate was supposed to be, you know, robust, like $400,000, $5,000. And she's like, a little hesitant now, she's going to let me know, so we might have to scale back that estimate when we get closer.
Okay.
So that's just a preface to say, yeah, that's why it's not recommended to use like, you know, free cash or stabilization fund at this time.
And if I can just add on to that too, which we talked about last week, which is the new social tech that they're building.
Yes.
We are on the hook for a big chunk of change to start the work on that, right after that, so.
Yep.
That'll be, I think, January timeframe?
Yeah, and the trick of all, I guess it's within the context of the budget, but, I mean, it's a little tricky. If the town votes it without a funding source, the way it was explained to us is, once it votes it, we're stuck with it, we have to fund it. And that could be as much as $1.2 million debt service to Hanson alone. So we know how hard it was to cut like $100,000, $200,000 from the budget. I can't even imagine, take a $1.2 million, try to find that money in the budget. So what we talked about is that possibly, with that vote in January, we talked with the town clerk, that maybe it would have to be a debt exclusion, so the two votes would be in conjunction with each other. So if they vote that and the debt exclusion, because the thought was, if you just vote, who wants a new school? Yeah, who wants a new car? I do, but then later on, you're going to have to pay for it. So it's connecting the payment vote and the acceptance vote together. So that's, like Kevin said, that's important down the fight.
Do we have any debt that's coming off the rolls? You know how we've got that schedule of like police station, Hanson Middle...
Yeah, we got a few things coming off the rolls, like, right now, hopefully by, in FY '26, bond anticipation notes that were set aside to pay is going to be paid off. So that might be up like $200,000 in FY '27.
Yep.
So we'll go on like prepayments, because I know it was asked by school committee to me that says, hey, how come we only assessed $256,000 and you budgeted $176,000? I said, that's because you didn't include the bond anticipation notes that we have to pay down, so that's why. We're on the schedule to pay those off.
Okay. All right, do you have any questions for, Ms. Gray? Did you have anything you wanted to ask?
Did we just want to, we, regarding the conservation agent, we did look at a funding source for that, so the board would need to look at that and determine whether they wanted to use that funding source to keep the conservation agent at the 35 hours. There was a use of conservation, the trust fund monies in this document to keep the conservation agent at $35, uh, 35 hours.
Yeah, so basically, it was brought to Lisa's attention, like kind of out, like the Landauer that said, the conservation, the department head of the conservation department says, well, you can use the conservation trust fund to fund my salary. That was going to be a $22,000 reduction. So if the board so chose, they could add that $22,000 back in the budget, but take the money from the conservation trust fund, the $22,000. So that's right, Lisa, right?
Correct, yes. What's the FinCom's position on that?
We're going with the numbers we have here.
Okay.
This is our final, our final model.
Your best and final offer?
Best and final offer.
Yes, Mr. Gill.
Yeah, I just want to make sure somebody's prepared to speak about why we can't be touching the free cash amount.
You are planning on being at our meeting, right?
Yeah, yeah. No, you know, you absolutely can. I mean, you could spend every dollar of it if you wanted to. There's no reason why you couldn't. Just kind of plan ahead, because that's why...
No, I totally understand that.
No, he, I think he's...
And I'm just being facetious, but...
Okay, you guys are both being facetious.
It's speaking to people from Whitman, I mean, there's a sense over there, our friends, that any cuts would be purely per formative. And I'm sure that that's filtered down certain people who will be at town meeting, that they're going to demand that we just write a check out of free cash.
I have nothing to explain to that town meeting.
Yeah, I hope that you are, because I think what really, I think people need to understand is that at the current pace that we're at, we're looking at an override next year. If that override does not pass, this is just going to be a drop in the bucket on the cuts that we're going to, I mean, we're going to eviscerate town hall. There's just nothing else, like, get ready for your worst-case scenario, whatever that might be, give into it, because it's going to happen. And I'm not, I'm not threatening, it's just realistic, it's just the way it's going to be, because we just don't have that money anywhere else. So I think what our town accountant is trying to do is say, you need to save this money, because if you just give it all away now, as bad as it's going to be next year if the override, you know, doesn't pass, it's going to be even worse if you've used up all of the money you might have had to soften the blow. So that's, that's actually why both Whitman and Hanson initially had presented the funding of the full, you know, Whitman Hansen Regional School District with the override. But it didn't pass, which is fine. But what happened in Whitman was people kind of went AWOL and decided that they, which is their prerogative, you know, they wanted to use free cash, stabilization, and all that stuff. That was not what their finance, what their accountant had suggested, what their town administrator had suggested, or what the Select Board had suggested, because they're looking at the same cliff we're looking at next year. Not the exact same dollar amount, but essentially of the same severity. So I think you would be prepared to talk to it, you would be prepared to talk to it, because I do think that people think of it as like, well, just, just make this go, like, do whatever you're going to do to make this go away and just, you know, move past it. And, and I have to admit, like, you know, I would love that. It would have made my life a lot easier, you know, it would make all of our lives a lot easier. But we have a responsibility to everybody, to our employees, to the citizens, to everybody, everybody in town, to try to be prudent and not, not be, you know, spending money that we don't have. So, and I think that also, maybe you might, I know you usually will say this, but I know there's amounts we need to have in order for our bond rating not to suffer, so that when we borrow money, we're not paying more for that borrowing...
That's right.
...which is certainly going to come in handy when we're talking about social boat tech, la-la-la, whatever else might come up there. So it's, it's a domino effect. So, but yes, we will be prepared to talk to that, yeah.
So my understanding would be that I'll make the motion and give the explanation, and then I'll recognize Kevin to give an overview?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Gill. If you could just state who you are and...
First, I'm five minutes from the end of the screen.
Yep.
I'm assuming if we do get to Option Two, which is what Kevin was trying to... Will you go line by line? You want to go line by line?
I have, I have to admit, I haven't seen the actual...
Yes, you'd have to go line by line, because we're reopening the budget line from, from the prior town meeting. I don't think there's any other way to handle it.
Is there any way else to do it? Use free cash, try to...
Well, to be clear, Option Two is very pointed. It's what FinCom is recommending. If people want to do something different, that's Option Three.
I understand, but if you're moving through those different levels, people would judge to, to, well, the lines being cut.
No, so, no, so I think, you make a good point. So I think Option Two will have to be very scripted, like, be this, this box is what we're looking at, and then Option Three, if, God forbid, if we get there, then we'll be looking line by line by line.
The only thing I wanted to mention was the transfer station being reduced by $21,000, which would be one, kind of, cut one day off.
Yes.
Because the people are already starting to buy the new, the new transfer station stickers, which are increasing to $78 for one year, not three year stickers anymore.
Yep.
So that's going to make that a little complicated, because people are buying those stickers based on figure of duty, people will go for five, five, five days a week.
I don't think there's any, you know, there's no legal representation as to the availability, but I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, that complicates that issue a little bit. Just the fact that that kind of issue has kind of come up before, kind of, when laws failed reducing the days, and it was funded by free cash, so that, that has a whole history to it.
Yep.
And so I'm just trying to tell you that this is a very bad, because that's probably going to...
Well, thank you for letting us know the motion you're going to make, but I, you know, I really think we're trying, we're trying to say if we need to go this way, what I, what I guess I would say is, this has been a very thoughtful analysis involving weeks of, of, like, department head involvement, accountant, FinCom, Lisa, you know, like, this isn't willy-nilly, us just deciding like, oh, that's who we're going to, yeah.
You can say those things, because then we'll get a little...
No, and I know, I know, and it certainly is, it is, you know, people have the prerogative to make a different motion at town meeting, and we will, we will do the best we can with what we're given. That, you know, that's what we're here to do, so...
The only other thing I wanted to mention was the capital stabilization for our school debt. It was really, I actually, I actually was the one that did...
We know, yeah, yeah.
Would be, and it was the capital expenses, which, which are those things included in the Beachville School Agreement, that come up unexpectedly, and as soon as they go up by 5%,
Yes.
they have to assess the two, whatever town level was involved in it, unless it's the Beachville School, and what towns get assessed.
Understood. I think the, yeah, the question though that...
Unexpected regional school, school...
Did it say unexpected, though? I don't think the word unexpected was in there.
That was unexpected, that was...
Yeah, that was the intention.
That was the reason we had that account, not to pay for regulars.
No, I got you, and so the context that this came up was Dawn and I think other folks had discussed, could we use that account to pay for the Hanson Middle School HVAC system? With, so, you know, that was the question on the...
But that's not, that's, that isn't something that comes with capital expenses.
Right, and we, we, correct. And then we asked the question whether we could use that for debt, and it wasn't crystal clear whether we could or not, but even if we could, as Eric mentioned, there are plans for that money, so...
What was on the show was the intent of that motion in 2014, and that was the, that was the intent of the registry.
Yeah, I think, I do understand what you're saying, but the devil's in the details. Intention in the actual language may not be, you know, but we knew that was the intention, we could tell, but it didn't specifically say, you know, unexpected or unanticipated. Okay, any other questions, you guys? Okay. Did, do you guys just, mind, did you guys have any questions? No? Okay. And if you can just say who you are, because, yeah.
Um, sorry, I've been a little bit... With Option One, on the moment, I don't know that it would be clear at the beginning of the town meeting, I'm still not very completely clear about the super town meeting and about the commissioner's ability to change the budget without a say from either town. So if we don't have a budget, so the way that, and I don't have the warrant article in front of me, the way that it sounds, if you accept the 5%, that's not, we're not accepting anything. If, if we vote yes on Option One, that means that the budget goes back to the school committee for another reassessment.
Correct.
Likely, we will not have a budget by July 1st, which will put the school committee on a 112 budget that the commissioner set. He can raise the budget. In 2019, in Dayton, Rehoboth, they went to a 112. The committee, the communities rejected a $43 million budget, and the commissioner set their budget at $44 million. He increased their budget by $919,000 and change. He increased their budget by $919,000 and change. They were about $1 million in hold harmless. Hanson is $1.3 million in hold harmless. I don't know where Whitman is, I think when I looked today, it was $2 million and change. We are, I, I understand the situation, you know, no one wants to have a cut. The school committee is cutting five positions. We reduced our budget by close to $1 million, and we still can't get to the five percent without cutting 16 more positions. If we don't have a budget, it is a real possibility that the commissioner comes in and says, you have to pay more. And then, to your point, Laura, what are we going to do then?
Well, and, and so I...
I just, I'm very concerned.
So I think that's important for you to get up at town meeting and say what you just said. We understand that. We've talked about the 112 here in our meeting. We've talked about it. So we understand.
I understand that, that's a very real possibility.
Yeah, I mean, you know, look, there's lots of grenades with lots of pins to be pulled here, and I think, you know, it, it's up to the voters. At the end of the day, it's up to the voters. But I do think it's important that when people make their vote, that they understand there may be unintended consequences and what at first blush might look good, may not ultimately get you what you were hoping to get with that vote. So if you, you know, I, I, I did speak to, you know, Beth Stafford and very strongly suggested that you guys would have, that the school committee would have somebody get up and speak about, you know, again, you know, I don't, I don't want to get like dramatic or, just the facts, just the facts. Like, this is, this is, you know, this is the way that this law works, these are the steps. And, you know, certainly it's the school committee's prerogative, should this not, you know, should the five percent be where we land at, at the end of the day with this town meeting? It's the school committee's prerogative to, to die on that hill and say, we want to do a super town meeting. In the interim, there's also the possibility that more funding will come from the state. And you might have...
Sure, we didn't get, I'm sorry, didn't travel last...
No.
The state budget wasn't finalized until August. And at our last meeting on Wednesday, so, so you had reached out and said, you might be getting $400,000 extra dollars, with charter school tuition, that's actually cut to about $280,000.
It's something, so, yeah.
But it's not for, it's not, you know, so, so we can't put all our eggs in that basket. Like, to your point, if we can't, how can this happen?
Right.
Right? The, the state budget was not finalized until August last year, like, right before the school started, and it's, it's not something that we can count on, unfortunately. And so we have to go with what we know.
No, no, I understand that. When I spoke to Brady, he thought it was a high probability that by the mid, middle of July, that would be on lockdown. It may or may not come to bear. Kevin, did you have something? Oh, all right, you looked like you were, okay. Kara, did you want to say anything, Laura?
Um, I mean, obviously, Hillary...
I'm sorry, if you can say who you are too.
Of course, Karen Moser, do you need my question?
No, no.
Okay. Um, Hanson School Committee, right? So, um, obviously Hillary has a lot more experience on the committee than I do, so I've been to our re-earr meeting and our number one meeting, and I've been getting myself as educated as I can in the past three or four weeks. So, you know, I think one thing that I, that I know has come up a lot that, that kind of gets bounced, well, two things actually, that I've seen kind of bounced around in social media, which again, I think I really want people to get their facts from the source and not from rumor. But one thing is, I want to, I want to be really clear that this town meeting is not voting on an override. I've heard that word thrown around, you know, override is null and void, like, that's done. And the second thing was, I think, around when, I think there's been a lot of talk about the use of, of funds for the school operating budget over the past few years, specifically ESAR funds, which I think could be debated at nauseam. I think in reality, this was, was money that was given to districts and, you know, they wouldn't want them not to spend it, right?
No, but can you, can you, one thing that I think I had spoken to both of you guys and had emphasized that this board gets a lot of questions, and I see it bandied about very often on social media, is the, the addition of the, and I keep, the number keeps sort of, I don't know.
Not 32.
Okay, so, so can, yeah, and that is the number that keeps getting bandied about, and I'm not really sure what the original source for that was, but are you guys able to articulate how that money was spent, what the thought process was, so that people can feel, you know, can under, have a better understanding?
Sure, so, you have to back up. So in 2016, in FY16, sorry, the school budget received a zero percent increase. Teachers that year, W H A employees took a zero percent. Three years later, in FY19, nine conditions were from the school district. So in a span of three years, the school district, to use your word, was a disturbing hit.
Yep.
And the pandemic hit, and we received $2 million and change that had to be spent by a certain amount of time. We were already behind, and now, full disclosure, I did not join school for the age of 2020, but part of the reason I did was because of the things that were happening prior to. So in 2020, we all know the world shuts down, education for students is not what it is, home life for students is not what it is, kids come back in the fall of 2020, some are learning remotely, everyone uses device. I think curriculum was purchased before 2020. The district did not have a curriculum as a budget line item. A school district did not have curriculum as a budget line item. We purchased Chromebooks, which are on like reciprocal renewal...
Like a cycle, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, a cycle. So those are things. We are in charge of our OPEL, so unlike Municipal School District, the Whitman Hanson Regional School District houses OPEL, so some of the money went into MTRS to pay for that.
You may want to break down the acronyms that you're using on that.
OPEL is Retirement.
Yep, I, I know what it is, I'm just saying, yeah.
Well, you have it here, don't you?
Yes, yes, yeah.
Okay, so, and then staff, right? So we had a full, I, I want to say that the district had close to 500 students in a virtual learning school in 2020, so when school opened back up in the fall of 2020. And there were some teachers who went and did that, and others had to be hired. In the FY25 budget, there are a total of 11 positions that have moved in. I, I have a, I have a handout, I don't know what...
When you say, yeah, I, what, I, I think...
And to you?
Yes, I, I definitely gave it to everybody, yep, yep.
If you look at that document, so the interventionist, that's a new word for reading and math specialists, those were conditions that were cut pre-COVID. Then COVID came, and kids were coming into school, and we all know that every kid's home life is different, so they weren't having things, and they weren't having school, regular school. We had a presentation in March where it can show you how the interventionists, the specialists, is actually saving the district money because the MTSS, which is the multi-tiered support system that DESI is really pushing, to perform interventions on students so that they're not all categorized as special education students, which costs the district more money. You're able to have those interventionists work with kids in the district to prevent the extra spending. I will tell you that last year in the preschool loan, there were three new hires because of the high means population after preschool. That is legal. Special education, ELL student services, those are legal.
When you say legal, statutorily required.
Yes.
You're required to do that.
Which you don't get money for.
Yep.
And if we don't service those students, we are out of compliance and can lose more funds. I said in a meeting, I think our ELL population in 2021, in the fall of 2021, was 75 students, and in February of this year, it was 223 students. Those are not migrant, they're not hungry, like Whitman or Hanson, those are just people who we need to our community, and those students deserve to be serviced, and they need to be serviced.
Well, they're required to be serviced, so, yeah.
All those students, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And so all this complicates things, but I think you have the document.
Yep.
You know, I've got a nurse to cover the preschool because of these, I've got a preschool teacher, we've got a district liaison, an ELL liaison, six ELL staff, our interventionists, we moved a special ed coordinator to be the MTSS coordinator, we have lost seven positions, three positions were gained without any impact to the budget, and so at the end of the day, it's 11 total positions, which I will remind you, in FY19, 19 positions were cut. So we didn't even restore those. And so, you know, when we talk about this money that we had, really, we were mandating things that had taken away from the kids and the services.
Okay.
We're still not, in my opinion, as a citizen, as a, a parent of students who attend schools, we don't have what our neighboring district has for schools. We are far behind what they have.
All right, well, thank you for that.
I have one more thing.
Oh, yeah, I just want to check in with everybody here for a second. Did anybody have any questions for Hillary about, because I know, David, you really wanted to...
So the whole, so the whole 31 people being hired with one-time COVID money, that's a, that's a rumor? That's, that's, that's a lie? So, did you guys get money? Was money given to you, like COVID money? Is that a lie too, that we didn't...
No, they got ESAR money, and she said that they did, yeah, yeah.
What, what was that money spent on?
She, she, she just, yeah.
Everything you just covered, that's...
Yeah, one thing.
That wasn't, you didn't, you didn't take that money and hire people, so that was, that was just a lie.
What we did.
They hired a lot.
I didn't say we didn't hire people.
Excuse me?
There were 11 people.
There were 11 people.
So it was 11 people in the FY25 budget?
Right. But you said that you had already lost prior to that.
But, but that's for this budget, we're talking 2020, did, did they hire...
FY25 budget, there was one, that's a question?
This, this was 2020 or is this 2025?
Oh, it's FY25 at the bottom of that document.
That's leading up to where we are.
Leading up to where we are now.
So 20, FY2020, FY2023 and 2024, there was also money given.
Right, so, so...
I, I have to make one point, I have to make one point to you.
Okay, hold on, hold on, guys.
The five non-renewals, resignations, retirements, that doesn't count as a cut. Those people are not here anymore. It's not like they were wanting to keep their jobs. We're talking about townspeople that want to keep their jobs. I have to make that point, because I, Jeff said this to, to us, and I made the point then, these people are non-renewals, resignations, or retirements, five of them. They weren't cut.
Right, so non-renewal means they're not being...
They weren't cut.
So that means they might want their job, but they're not going to be able to do that.
He told us, he told us that they were not, they were, they didn't want to come back. I know they don't. So my point is, be honest about the cuts, that's all.
All right, I just, I, okay. Mr. Hill, did you...
No, I, I just, I just, this list is from 2020 through 2025?
She, what, what they're trying to do is demonstrate, how did we get here? How did we need to hire the people that we needed to hire?
Right.
So it's a timeline, sort of like a ti- timeline of the positions, you know, since '21. If you look at the...
This doesn't include fall of '20, which was what David's getting at, I believe, was fall of '20, right?
No.
No?
FY21, so I think...
Yeah, so what...
FY21.
It says fiscal '21, so if you look, it says below is an account of the positions gained and lost since fiscal '21. It also says this list does not include paraprofessionals, since those numbers are specific to special education and fluctuate. And it also doesn't include replacements or retirees of staff members that have left.
I, could the 31 number include be paraprofessionals?
I forget about that.
That seemed like the type of...
It actually potentially could, and that's an excellent point. And it, because there are caveats at the beginning of this. I don't know what, if you guys...
I, I, paraprofessionals wouldn't be then. At any point in time, a paraprofessional can be added, and as given to you, right? That's really what paraprofessionals are for, and to be frank, it's money, paraprofessionals, they don't, they, they're not on the same salary scale, it means...
Right, but they are part of the budget and part of the employees, people.
Sorry, the majority of paraprofessionals are special ed, um, and staff, statutorily required, so they, they fluctuate based upon special education populations.
All right, and I'm sorry, Kara, I know I cut you off because you were going to say something, so I, I do, yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to add one more thing, and again, I'm new to this process, but in kind of educating myself, and you can, in the list that the board has in front of them, you can note how many are, you know, required by section, right? And so I just want to make a point too, that...
I don't have that.
For, for the members in this room, as well as for voters, that if people philosophically have a issue with how the ESAR money is for spent, or the types of positions that are hired, you need ESAR funds, those, those decisions that are legally set formally to hire are not the positions that are going to be eliminated if we are looking at reducing the assessment. So if you're looking at...
So expand on that a little bit, uh, yeah.
So if you have, you know, for example, interventionists that are being, you know, the state says that you need to have a MTSS process, math, math and security systems support. And in doing so, you need to hire interventionists, reading specialists, math specialists, to help work with general education students to remediate gaps. If, if people philosophically don't think that that's a good use of their money, that's not something that the school committee has the option of eliminating.
Because you're required to have them.
Required to have.
Yep, just a moment, Mr. Young, yep.
This is, I have, so, so the cuts would come primarily from our elementary schools, so we lose three teachers, we lose four teachers from Bonley, four teachers from DuPaul, three teachers from Indian Head, four teachers from Hanson Mill. So they, that would just be, that's where the cuts would come from.
Okay.
So I think it's important to note that positions that were added with ESAR, you don't just now take them away because you don't have it.
Right, this isn't a vote against the way that you spent ESAR funds, because some, some of those positions were required and they're going to stay.
And we were already, to the point that I made at the beginning, we were already behind the eight ball in the staffing that we had for students anyway, and now we were sort of backed into a corner, right? You have to service these students by statute. So it's not great, but it is, you know, you have the back, I think that's, that's the most important thing.
So, so ba, so basically, the town against...
Okay.
So, I just want to say, so basically, we're fighting a losing battle.
Well, if you think helping...
I'm not, yeah, just a sec. Okay, oh boy, all right. We've got a lot of hands up, okay.
I, yeah, I lost my...
Okay, I'm sorry, guys, but we've got a bunch, so Mr. Young was first, and then Mr. Sullivan, and then Mrs. Sabag.
Would the state, the state require solid positions to be counted, you know, in those of the stature?
Yes.
Should we ever appeal any of those to the position of...
Okay, okay, no, and I'm not sure that you would be able to, with public education. So I can't say that a special ed student doesn't require a paraprofessional. That's to be of compliance, and then the district would be sued.
What, you're...
For public education?
No.
No, yeah, so you can appeal an unfunded mandate, is where Mr. Young is going, but I think in this case, this is more than an unfunded mandate, it's an educational mandate, so I'm not sure which one supersedes. So, yeah, I don't...
I don't think there's any stipulation...
Yeah.
That was put in back in 1980, when those proportions were half, it was all under proportion.
Yeah, but I think the, the fundamental purpose of public education is to service all of your students without a separate, right?
I understand that, but if you build a position that's mandated, since it existed in 1980, near the end of time, you know, people could have been bossed with a...
All right, Mr. Young, we're gonna, so I think you got your re-answer, which is she didn't do that, and, yep, okay. Mr. Young, we're gonna, we're gonna move on. Mr. Sullivan?
So my question would be, the town is taking steps to reduce our headcount, because we see where our financial outlook is headed.
Right.
If we see our financial outlook is headed to be even worse next year, why isn't the school taking steps to reduce their headcount thoughtfully instead of adding to the headcount? I understand, you know, people don't want to get rid of teachers, but we see what's happening here. Next, we use $700,000 of free cash next year, it could be a million of free cash next year.
Right.
We don't have a million of free cash. There's no appetite for an override. So why aren't we, seems like we're the only ones who were planning for a down year when the school committee, it would be prudent to prune some of that excess now, or maybe not excess, but to shrink their budget now, in anticipation of next year. So I just don't know why those steps aren't being taken.
The cliff is just going to be steeper for everybody, to the extent that there's no preparation for next year and the override fails, the cliff is just going to be.
Right, and we've taken steps in the town to reduce the positions, to keep the people on, you know, to keep our headcount, a relatively small headcount. They have to start thinking that same way, I would think, otherwise, when the cliff is steep next year and you have to lay off 20 people, you could have maybe saved some.
I don't know if you guys want to respond to that, or?
So the current budget, we're using $350,000 of our free cash, so we need a certain break card, and then with the not replacing positions, not hiring, that's $560,500 with total cuts, $910,500 of our budget. So we are doing those things. I think that the other elephant in the room is our full harmless status, and I have sent an email to the board a few weeks ago about that. That's a conversation for another time, but that is what's really, really crushing. It's our Chapter 70, Special Education Tuition Increase by 14%, Charter School Tuition Increase by 20%, State Funding Increased by 0%.
Right.
So mathematically, I don't know what, you know, that, that's really hard to.
And that, that's what it boils down to, it's a math problem. We don't have the growth, and I think to Mr. Sullivan's point is, we don't have the growth. Like, we can't manufacture growth, we can't manufacture money, you know, and I think you saw that the appetite for the override was not there, either at the polls or at town meeting. You know, one could, could argue, well, you know, that was just 100, you know, angry people at town meeting or something, and they, they didn't want to vote for the override. But then when it doesn't pass at the polls, you're getting a very strong message from across the board, and, and these were not just a bunch of curmudgeons. There were parents that were not voting for this override. So I, I think that, you know, we're not going to solve all of the world's problems tonight, but I think this is, I, I deeply appreciate you guys coming and having the conversation to get the information out. I hope you're going to come to town meeting and do the same thing. Mr. Um, Mr. Hill, Mrs. Sabag had a question, and then.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, okay.
Stacy, seven, seven forty-two, hi. I'm learning tonight that the school committee is passionate, and I understand advocates for the children, and all the people from Women in Hands want the best for the kids. What I'm learning tonight is, the state is really doing extortion again. It's just like the MTA. They're telling, what was it, Dyson, I think you said, Rahabat Dyson?
Yeah, yeah.
If, okay, so you're going to pay $3 million, now we want you to pay $4 million, that, like, why do they have all that power? It just doesn't seem fair, when people are making reasonable attempts at a budget here, why should the state step in and tell us otherwise? That's what I'm missing, I'm sorry, I know I'm new to this, but.
No, I don't think you knew, but it's a virtually unanswerable question, at least this evening. We could ponder that, you know, I think ad infinitum, but, no, at the heart of it is, and it, it isn't just with the schools, and it isn't, I mean, there's so many unfunded ma- it's like, okay, I guess we'll have to magically come up with a way to pay for this, you know, without, you know, taxing people additionally. So, Mr. Hill, yeah.
One thing I, you know, I thank you all for, for what you do, the school committee is not an easy, easy board to be on, but you just mentioned the, the Chapter 70 that's going down, and various state funds that are going down. That would help to have numbers like that, to say, I don't know, I don't know how much Chapter 70 is going down in all these funds, how much are we losing? And I'm thinking that type of thing.
On the website, there's a graph of the whole harmless, and you can.
I'm just wondering if something, something between that and a one-sheet, or something like, like a.
You're saying for town meeting?
At town meeting.
Yeah.
To explain why we need this, why we need to spend the money. Because I haven't really heard, I mean, I've heard, and I understand, but, but why we need to spend the money, as opposed, you know, it's because of what you're saying, that, you know, the, the, basically, the state is mandating we hire more people.
Right, at the same time, not, the, the funding's coming down, yeah.
So is that gap what we're talking about, does that equal what we're talking about, or is it similar, you know what I mean? So we can.
I would say blind share of the, the gap, yeah.
So that we could see how the numbers work, because I think a lot of us, you know, we're hea- hearing a certain number of people were, were hired with COVID money, and different things that were happening, and maybe, maybe social media and all this information we're being fed is wrong, and it sounds like a lot of it is. But I think we need to come back and say, well, that's wrong, this is right.
Here's the facts.
But I haven't seen, I haven't seen the facts from the school committee necessarily, in a way, I mean, I understand we could go back and look at that budget and compare it to 2020 and, and crunch numbers and.
Well, in, on the, I can share, I can send it to you.
No, but I, I think Ed's saying for town meeting.
No, I'm fully fine.
Yeah, yeah.
My concern, Chapter 70, is so complicated, that my concern is to not to bog down people with that piece.
I was hoping to dumb it down.
Right, and to be honest, I'm not sure how much can dug down with Chapter 70.
Yeah.
You know, you guys had a presentation in July.
Yeah.
A gentleman from finance, Desi Mayne, he presented to you all, and twice in that meeting, he told you that both Women in Hands and were substantially below their effort target, he said it twice.
Yeah.
The meeting, he said it twice, he read the minutes, he said it twice, and listening to you, there was a lot to wrap your brain around, and you do, you sit on this floor. I'm not sure how that's going to go.
Yeah, I'm just talking like a chapter, a number, a number that, that, from last year to this year, what's the difference percentage-wise, that type of thing.
Zero, it's 0%, which after 75, has increased 0% from FY20 towards FY25.
And then what is it, you know, maybe, given that, what is it usually historically, that type of thing, just so we can see.
We only ever get $30 per student because we're full of them.
Um, did any, did, did anybody else have any, any questions? Okay, again, I think this, Mr. Young, excuse me, Mr. Young? Mr. Young? Um, I just want to thank you guys for coming. You're certainly welcome to stay, for, for people, you know, once we get past the subject they hear, it's typically like watching paint dry, but, but you're welcome to stay, if you want to, you know, have us talk about the host community agreement or whatever. But thank you, and, and again, you know, I think whatever information you're able to bring will combat the misinformation that's out there. And then if people are provided that information, and they still vote a certain way, then at least you know that, you know, that they're doing so armed with the information that we can provide to them. So, so I thank you, and did, did we need to take a vote?
You do want to take a vote.
Yes, okay.
You're doing.
On our informational warrant?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
As the select board recommends.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion to approve the proposed Select Board slash FinCom, right, because we don't have any discrepancies.
In, in this document, there was one adjustment for that conservation, so the vote would probably be to vote the column that says Option 2, Option 2, because that's the FinCom, and it sounds like you're agreeing with FinCom, so just accept Option 2 as printed in the warrant.
Okay, I will entertain that motion. So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Okay, great. Thank you, guys, and hopefully I got you, got you out by your seven o'clock meetings. We went around the bend and back again, Mr. Sullivan, but we got there. Thanks, Sean, and, and hopefully reach out to Kate, have your people call our people, because, yeah. All right, and then that brings us to, thanks, guys. That brings us to, are we ready for the, the first item on our agenda?
The executive session, yes.
No, no, not the executive session, we're not doing that.
Oh, well, we do.
Lisa gave me the information for you to.
Lisa Clark.
Yes.
Oh, but I do have town council on, online for the six o'clock executive session.
Well, that was, we decided we weren't doing that, we're not, we're going to do executive session at the end. You were going to give us a brief description.
Okay.
Yeah. But for number, the Lisa Clark item, the vote to approve the issuance and details of notes and bonds to be issued, can somebody lay this up for us?
So, Mr. Hill, you need to read that.
Oh.
Oh, excellent.
I hope you, did you have throat larytritis, because that's going to be.
Nobody told me.
All right, okay, did you want to make, and then you can make that motion after Mr. Hill reads that.
I, the clerk of the Select Board of the Town of Hanson, Massachusetts, certify that at a meeting of the board upheld on June 11th, 2024, of which meeting all members of the board were duly notified, and at which a quorum was present, the following vote was passed, all of which appears upon the official record of the board in my custody. Voted one, the town shall issue a bond, or bonds, at an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $500,000, the bonds, pursuant to Chapter 29(c) and 111 of the general laws, and a vote of the town passed October 2nd, 2023, Article 4, which authorized a total borrowing of $500,000 for Community Septic Management Loan Program, the project. And I keep going through all these?
The whole thing, yep.
I don't know if we get to vote on each one.
Yep.
That the terms of the financing agreement, or agreements, dated May 1st, 2024, the finance agreement, or agreement, and the project regulatory agreement, or agreements, each relating to the notes and the bonds are hereby approved. This, that, and in anticipation of the issuance of the bonds, the treasurer is authorized to issue an interim loan note, or note, the notes, from time to time, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $500,000. That each bond or note shall be issued as a single registered security and sold to the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust, the trust, at a price determined pursuant to the financial agreement, financing agreement. Five, that the treasurer is authorized to determine the date, the form, the maximum interest rate, and the principal maturities of each bond and note, and to execute a financing agreement, or agreements, with the trust with respect to the sale of the bonds and notes. Such date, from form and maturities, and the specific interest rate or rates of the bonds and notes, to be approved by a majority of the Select Board and the treasurer, and evidenced by their execution of the bond or notes. Six, that any certificate or documents relating to each bond and note, collectively the documents, may be executed in several counterparts, each of which shall be regarded as an original, and all of which shall constitute one of, one and the same. Delivery of an executed counterpart of a signature page to a document by electronic mail in a PDF file, or by other electronic transmissions, shall be as effective as delivery of a manually executed counterpart signature page to such document. And electronic signatures on any of the documents shall be deemed original signatures for the purpose of the documents and all matters relating thereto, having the same legal effective, same legal effect as original signatures.
Almost there.
Getting there. Page two. Seven, that all action taken to date by the town and its officers and agents to carry out the project and its financing, including the execution of any loan commitment or agreement by the treasurer, are hereby ratified, approved, and confirmed, and. Eight, the treasurer and other appropriate town officials are hereby authorized to take any and all actions necessary or convenient to carry out the provisions of this vote, including execution and delivery of the financing agreement, or agreements, and the project relative regulatory agreement, or agreements, relating to the project. I further certify that the votes were taken at a meeting open to the public, that no vote was taken by secret ballot, that a notice stating the place, date, time, and agenda for the meeting, which agenda including the adoption of the above votes, was filed with the town clerk, and a copy of thereof posted in a manner conspicuously visible to the public at all hours, or in the municipal building that the office of the clerk is located, or, if applicable, in accordance with an alter- alternative method of notice prescribed or approved by the Attorney General as set forth in 940 CMR 29.03, Section 2b, at least 48 hours, not including Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays, prior to the time of, of the meeting, and remained so posted at the time of the meeting that no deliberations or discussions in connection with the sale of the bonds or notes were taken in executive session, all in accordance with general law, 30a section, eight sections, 18 through 25, as amended, and then it's dated June 11th, 2024, it's going to be signed by.
I feel like I just sat through Shakespeare here.
So you need to sign?
Well, we will know, we need Ms. Rain to, Ms. Rain to make the.
I move to adopt the votes as presented to this meeting, and incorporate such votes into the minutes of this meeting.
Let's drive a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
To, 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 okay.
Is this actually signed by me?
Yes.
Yes. We took the vote.
No, I mean, I just, it, it seems like it should be you, not me.
No. Don't let it go to your head, don't let the power go to your head. This way, you can't have plausible deniability about sign.
One, 10-second time in life, like 10 seconds of fame.
There'll be more, trust me. Okay, great, all right, so then that brings us to energy contact, contract presentation and discussion. Are we going to do that via Zoom?
Yes.
All right. And the question of the hour is, will it work? We all want to know. And, you know, in the interim, Lisa, I think, Mr. Clemens, would you like us to take your particular items out of order, so, in the interest of having?
We're interested in you speaking.
Oh, okay, all right, okay. We don't hear that often.
We will be.
We resemble that. While we are doing that, why don't, why don't we vote on accepting the donations to the Council on Aging in honor of Kendal Lou? $100 from Sarah and David White, and $100 from Cheryl and John Bragg. I will entertain that motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, fantastic, and then we can also, uh.
Camp Quaney, so.
Yeah, Camp Quaney, approve South Shore Skating Club banquet, June 5th, at a rate of $250. South Shore Christian Academy 30th Anniversary, Anniversary Festival, December 7th, 2024, at a rate of $150. And Whitman Hansen Tennis Team Banquet and Pavilion, for a rate of $40 on June 13th, 2024. I will entertain that motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? All right, fantastic, look at that, we're clipping along. And, what else can we do? We can accept with regret the resignation of Mr. Clemens from the Conservation Commission, I will entertain that motion.
So moved with regret.
Second with regrets.
All in favor? Accept the resignation from Marion DiMascio from the High Street Park Committee with regret.
So moved.
Second with regrets.
Okay, all in favor? Appoint Phil Clemens to the Open Space Committee, which we don't need to do with regret. I will entertain that motion.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, let's see, we're putting on our cap shoes here. Shall we take a brief recess?
Sure.
Is that going to complicate matters for you, Rob?
No, it should be fine.
Okay, great. Thank you, brief recess. Yes. Okay.
Am I joining with audio?
Oh, you are now.
Yes, he turns his off.
Welcome back to our meeting. Next up on the agenda is the energy contract presentation and discussion.
I turn you, yeah, okay, we should be fine now.
Okay, so who do we have on the other line?
Nobody.
There he is.
Good evening, Bob, thanks for joining us, can you hear us?
I don't think he's on yet.
Hi, Bob.
Can everyone?
Can you hear us? Apparently not.
We're all muted.
We're muted.
Can you hear us now?
I can hear someone speaking, this is Bob.
Okay. Hi, Bob, thanks for joining us.
Hi, how are you?
Good, so we've got the full board here, and we are ready to hear what you have got to tell us about our energy. And we are ready to hear what you have got to tell us about our energy contract.
Okay. Well, first of all, thank you very much for taking your time to chat with me. It seemed like it's been quite a busy night for you folks already. And Lisa, thank you for setting everything up. I appreciate that as well. I'm not sure how many, how many of you folks were part of the last meeting we had. So some of this might be a little bit of review. You know, try to, try to just kind of breeze through it. I was telling my wife today that it's a, it's a little difficult to even know how to approach you folks right now because this market is so volatile here in New England. And so what I would like to do is I'm going to go ahead and try to just go ahead and help you understand why the New England market and specifically natural gas and electricity are just so crazy. You may have noticed it in your homes, as a matter of fact, as well. If you hadn't locked in your rates for electricity, some of these numbers went crazy this past year. First of all, for those of you who don't know me, my name is Bob Stavri. I'm with Sprague Energy. Been doing natural gas and electric contracts commercially for the past 14 years. Sprague has been around since 1870, right out of Portsmouth, New Hampshire. And we currently have about 15,000 commercial customers. Again, both gas and electricity. And I've got a list of probably, oh, I don't know, 30 different municipalities and cities, towns that we take care of, including Foxborough, Beverly, Shirley, Norwood, Chelsea, Gloucester, Sharon, Ebyde, Grafton, Dorico, Wayman, blah, 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 lots and lots of them. So I say that just to simply help you understand that, you know, Sprague is not a fly-by-night company in any way, shape or form. A lot of people will get phone calls from suppliers and those people will be trying to convince you that they are, they're there to help you out. The truth is Sprague really has been here since 1870. We are one of the only natural gas suppliers left in New England. As a matter of fact, there's only one other one. And recently they put out, I'm not going to go ahead and name them only because it would be right, but they just recently put out a, a note to all of their customers saying that even their fixed rates are not going to be fixed rates. They're going to go ahead and be able to pass things through. So that's going to be something important to watch as time goes on. But before I get into my little presentation that I gave you, I'm going to give you a little bit of hope and tell you I will not be going through all 10 pages. I'll go much quicker than that and I'm going to go ahead and bring a couple of pages forward. I'm going to share the good, really good news first, which is this. Your gas contract, which is what we're going to be discussing tonight a little bit, that one, you've saved about $5,200 in this particular contract. And anytime you don't lose, you gain, that's a good thing. The power contract, which we are not necessarily discussing right now, but I do want to mention it to you, the power contract, right now, you've saved to date $62,000. So that's, I would consider that pretty good.
And Bob, what is our rate on the electricity?
Currently, your rate is 16.8 right now. And let's see, I'm going to go ahead and just bear with me for once. And I appreciate you jumping in there. I go crazy when I don't, I can't see people and I also can't, and I can't, let's see, where am I? Gas, electric. Bear with me. I'm sorry. I'm trying to find.
No, I think that's right because I saw you sent some type of a document to Lisa and, and it lists all types of poles and then the energy price. It says non TOU is .168.
Yeah, yeah. So that is, that is the rate that you folks are on right now. What I was trying to do is I just wanted to make sure that I've got the right one because I, I actually have access to the Public Utility Commission and all the current rates right now. And so right now, just to give you an idea, non TOU rates right now, in January of 23, so you're locked in at 16 cents and your contract started in December of '22. In December of '22, the rate for the utility was at 34.3 cents. And you were locked in at 16.8. The following month, it went up to 38.34. So I mean, it was just an incredible amount of savings. Now, as time has gone on, what's happened is electricity is, it follows natural gas and that will be one of the things I discuss in my, in my little presentation here in a minute. But as natural gas goes, so does electricity. So here in New England, I'm going to, I'll just say natural gas, it's extremely volatile. And you can see that January 23, it was all the way, caused electricity to jump up to 38 cents. This past winter did not turn out to be quite as cold as what everybody was anticipating. Came up to be actually one of the warmer ones, the fourth warmst winter in history. And so what happened then was, you know, because we didn't have all that demand for natural gas, caused electric and natural gas prices to drop. And that's really good for customers, especially for residents. It's really good for, for, you know, municipalities and companies. The danger in that is they look at that and they think, wow, that's, that's the way it is and the danger is over. But the truth is, is that everything that caused the volatility here in New England, it's all still here in place. And that's what we'll be, that's what we'll go ahead and discuss a little bit more. But I did want to point out just how high, how crazy National Grid and EverSource here in Massachusetts went to, having been 38 cents. In some places, Massachusetts was at 46 cents this past, in that same winter. Did that answer your question? I know that was a long ways around that.
No, that definitely answered, answered my question. Thank you.
Excellent. And please, so what I'm going to do is I'm going to go to page two on my, on my presentation. Do you all have that?
Yes, we have. We all have the presentation, Bob.
Okay, good, good. So I'm going to breeze through here and what I'm going to do is, let's see, I do want to go ahead and just give you permission. Please jump in anytime you want to. I don't like to, I don't like to go ahead and just hog it, but I also know you guys want to get home and get to bed sometime tonight. So that being said, so New England Natural Gas Info. New England's natural gas pipeline, for those of you who are not aware, was installed back in the 1970s. And that was when the gas was not very prevalent. People weren't using it so much for heating, nor were they using it for production, et cetera, et cetera. But now it's become, it's become the primary fuel here in New England. Now, even though we've increased that and it's now the primary fuel, the problem, point number two, is that it, that although the demand for the natural gas has gone up, we have yet to increase the supply. So that pipeline has not been increased for all intents and purposes, or very little. It has not been increased and big enough to fit all that gas that we are in need of here in New England, which creates some problems. The reason for the price spikes during the winter is that there simply isn't enough gas coming into New England. It's like, it's like, the best way for me to describe it to folks is it's like trying to fill up a big pickup truck with a straw. It's very, very difficult. You can only get so much, you know, gas through that straw. It's the same way with pipeline. You can only get so much through. So you either have to increase the size of that pipeline or you have to put more compressors in line, which can compress it even more. And that will, will help out too. And that's what they've primarily done because they've, they've been unsuccessful in being able to get new pipelines into New England. So during the winter, when the biggest demand for natural gas comes around here in New England, naturally because of the heating requirements, that's when we have to go ahead and rely on a new, on a different commodity. And that's called LNG, Liquid Natural Gas. That is a global commodity as opposed to the pipeline gas that you're familiar with. The pipeline gas just simply comes through the pipelines, you know, from wherever it's drilled. Now, whether it be in Pennsylvania, New York, or down in Texas, wherever it may be, and it comes through the pipelines. LNG, however, is Liquid Natural Gas. And what they do is they drop the, the temperature of, of your standard natural, of standard natural gas to some, some particular number below zero and it turns it into a liquid. And then they're able to go ahead and put it onto cargo ships and they're able to ship it around the, you know, around the globe. We have a couple of little problems. Number one is we have what we call the Jones Act. I don't know if anybody's familiar with that, but here in, here in the United States, we have the Jones Act. And that Jones Act prevents anybody who can produce, for instance, we produce natural gas. We cannot put it on a ship and send it to ourselves and buy it from ourselves unless it's sent, unless it's produced by American workers, put on American flag flying ships, cargo ships with American equipment. And that's the only way we can do that. So currently, there are no American cargo ships that carry LNG. So we have to go ahead and buy the, you know, as, as New England, we actually have contracts with, with Africa, sending their cargo ships full of LNG up into New England. So you can imagine that that could get expensive. If, if the global markets take off, that can really cause natural gas to go through the roof. And I'm, I'm diverging from my presentation, but that's okay right now because this is important to understand. So when Vladimir Putin invaded Ukraine, that caused an incredible demand for LNG because no longer was Ukraine and Europe getting all of their natural gas through the pipeline, through the Nord Stream pipeline. They closed that down. And so they were in desperate need going into that winter for that natural gas. That LNG, let's say it normally sold for $10 a unit, it spiked over $100 a unit. Now, we had to buy it because that's all we have to go off of. In other words, we have no other alternative. So we had to go out and buy it from, at a global price, which is very, very scary because there's so many global issues going on right now in this world, as you're, as you're well aware.
Now, Bob, I'm sorry to interrupt, but we, we have a very robust agenda in front of us here. And I'm just wondering if we could.
Yes. You want me to go, you want me to fast forward?
Well, that would be amazing. I think we just need to know. We, we do really appreciate, you know, the background and I never knew what Liquid National, you know, natural gas was. And now I feel, you know, like I could, maybe at a, you know, at a cocktail party, I could bring that up and I would wow people. But I'm just wondering if we can kind of get to the point where there are decisions we need to make and if they're, okay, that would be great.
Absolutely. If you'll go ahead and turn to page three, I'm going to go ahead and mention one other thing and then we'll go ahead and then we'll go ahead and get into the numbers real quick. So New England Natural Gas continues. The one thing that I did want to mention was that here in New England, there are a number of gas pipelines. The primarily ones, the primary ones are the Tennessee Gas Pipeline and the Algonquin. Tennessee is called the TGP. The Algonquin is the AGT. The town of Hanson is on the AGT. We just received the notice. You'll see .3 on page three. That notice says that Algonquin's costs have increased significantly. And that word significantly is being bantered out there and is very, very concerning in all natural gas, whether it's the utilities or third-party suppliers like this. This could really make a huge difference to people this coming winter. Go to page four. Easy enough. All of that. Say, New England, the utility rates, both natural gas and electricity seem to be destined for continued volatility. I'm going to skip page five unless somebody wants me to go ahead and tell them about that.
I don't see anybody raising their hand on that.
Yeah, the, the idea of, of that chart there, just to give you an idea, the idea is just to demonstrate how volatile and how quickly things are moving already. So on page, page six, real quickly, things that will influence future natural gas prices. Weather, the Everett Natural Gas Plant, Russia, Ukraine, China, election, the upcoming election. Natural gas producers all over the United States are cutting back on their production and any other global issues. Page seven is where you wanted to go. Right now, your current contract with Sprague started in February of '22. Contract expired in April of '24. So it expired actually a couple of months ago. So right now, you're on what they call a market rate. In the summer, that rate is very good. So you're not going to have to worry about that. So you're going to, you're going to do very well. Of course, you don't use any, so it doesn't really matter. But your current rate is .708. EverSource, that, that next section down, I just wanted to tell you a little bit about EverSource currently, what they're at. Their average rate since the contract started was at 78.2. That's the average for the winter months when you guys, the majority of your natural gas. The highest rate it had hit was $1.47. So it's crazy. Your savings on a natural gas contract, $5,200. And the current contract offer for what they call a full requirements contract is .908 for 10 months, .958 for 22 months and .999 for 34 months. And the reason that those are so high is because again, what they're doing is they're purchasing natural gas futures. And the natural gas futures are rising very, very rapidly. And so without any further ado, I just want to, you know, I'll thank you. I'll take any other questions that you may have. In fact, if you think of them and you want to pass them along to Lisa and I, Lisa can pass them along to me and I'll try to answer them at some other point if that makes things easier for you.
So I think the question we would have is, you know, can you benchmark the 10-month, 22-month and 34-month offers against past prices? Are they higher than past prices or?
So with, with regards, and that's why I did, when I, let's see, when I went into the natural gas retail rates. So the retail rates during the winter, that's why I gave those, the benchmark. Really what you use is you want to use the EverSource average from November through April. And that's why I gave you .72 since this past contract started with a high as high as $1.5. So that's something to keep in mind. Yes, it's average 72. But again, you haven't had all of these, all of these things that are kind of accumulating in the background, which is going to affect natural gas pricing. So I, I apologize. I normally come into a conversation like this and I have a very clear direction of where I want to go. Whether I want to really push the customer to go ahead. I think that it's important that they sign or whether I think that it's important that they, you know, maybe just kind of float for a little while. At this point, there's just so many negative variables. In other words, variables that would cause the market to rise quicker than it will go down. That's the only thing that I can say to you, you know, at this point, unless you have specific questions and want me to explain a little bit more about page five.
No, no, I don't think so. But I mean, I think, you know, it doesn't take an economist to figure out that we're in incredibly volatile times right now.
Yes, especially here in New England.
Yeah.
Especially in New England. Actually, New England is the most volatile market in the United States right now, other than Hawaii.
So the last contract that we entered into with you was a two-year?
Yeah, 26 months.
26 months. Yeah. Wasn't that sort of a hybrid that we kind of negotiated with you? I don't think it was one of the offers that you made, but we tried to split the difference or something?
Yeah, what we, what I do is I look for what they call sweet spot pricing. So most companies, whether it's electric, gas, whatever it is, they'll come in and offer you your standard 12, 24, 36 months. What we do is we, we offer sweet spots. So a 12-month may be more expensive than the 14-month. Maybe, you know, so what we do is look around for those best ones. In this particular case, the 10, the 22 and the 34, those are the sweet spots.
And let's say we entered into a 34-month contract and all of a sudden prices dropped precipitously. Some, I don't know, maybe, maybe there's like legislation that changes something and, you know, or whatever. What, what is, are we able to break our contract?
Good, good question. So the answer to that is always yes, you can cancel, but unfortunately.
What's our penalty?
There's going to be a very, very stiff penalty. However, I, what I would say is I would say I would recommend the 34-month. If I, if I owned a company or was in your seat right now, I would say 34 months should be off the table. Because there's so many variables. You've got some really big variables. For instance, that election coming up.
Oh, yeah.
Really going to play some, you know, and not taking sides, but it's going to go ahead and impact this.
Well, regardless, it's going to impact. And, and then you've all, like you already mentioned in your, in your summary, Ukraine and Russia, China, I mean, these things are not going away overnight. So, you know.
That's right.
Yeah.
That's right. So my recommendation to you would be if you were thinking about doing it, do a 22-month. Then that, the nice thing about that is, let's say 12 months down the road, the market does fall precipitously. What we do is we can then take the remaining contract and we can go ahead and do what they call a blend and extend. So we take your current contract, the current rates, and we blend it with future rates. So let's say you lock in at 95 cents and the market drops down to 70 cents. We might be able to drop it, you know, extend you a year and get it for 80 cents.
Okay, so lessen the pain a little bit. You could lessen the pain a little bit of being.
Exactly. Yeah, yeah, yep.
All right. What do you guys think?
What was our current rate in our last contract?
Yeah, he's got it right here, seven.
Seven oh eight.
That was, that's the current rate as of today, or is that, that's the current?
That's, no, that's the current contract that just expired at the end of April.
Okay, because that expired then, so it's not, okay.
Well, no, now he said we're kind of free-falling.
Yeah, yeah. With the way, the way the global, I mean, the way the natural gas market, the the regulations state that as a third-party supplier at the end of your contract, we have to continue to service your account until you either sign another contract or you request us to send you back to the utility. So in the meantime, you're just paying the market rate, and in the summer, that's the very cheapest rates of the year. So I'm gonna keep it at seven oh eight for forever.
That's the contract you want? I don't think that was on the table.
That would be, he said he has to keep it. Back in twenty-two.
He said market rate. So we haven't been at the seven oh eight since the end of April.
Okay.
Yeah. What is the market rate right now?
Well, there's, yeah, it's probably, uh, I would guess it's probably uh forty-five or fifty cents.
So we're signing a contract that's double that?
Yeah, so what you're doing, let me explain, the reason you're doing that is because of this. When you, when you, I can't, I can't see any of you right now, but I can imagine your faces. But let me go ahead and explain to you real quick what happens. What happens is, when we do a contract, um, we are taking twelve months' worth of uh pricing. So when we go ahead and we look at, and this is going back now, now you kind of forced me to just answer your question uh via page, um, page five. That's called the NYMEX chart, NYMEX settlement chart. That NYMEX settlement chart shows you every single month how much natural gas sold for during that particular month. So you can see, if you look at twenty-twenty-four on the far, far right, in March, natural gas was trading, and this isn't the price you guys would get. But if we just give you an idea, it was trading at a dollar fifty-eight. And then all of a sudden, in June, it went up to two dollars and forty-nine cents. And as of today, it's up to three dollars and eleven cents. So you can see it's moving upwards already. Um, so when we do a contract, what we're doing is, we're doing, let's say you do a twelve-month contract. If you have no usage in the month of June, then it's, it's zero usage at two dollars and forty-nine cents. Okay? But when you get into the winter, when you start using all of your gas, it's ten, you know, three thousand therms at a dollar. And so that's, and then you take that, you divide it out, and it's called a weighted average, and that's how you come up with this. So that ninety cents, although right now, just today's market price, when you're not using gas, is forty, fifty cents, whatever it may be. It really doesn't matter to you because you don't use any of it, and you can't lock that price in long term.
Could we, could we kind of free-fall through the summer and tell you that we wanna lock in, maybe like late Aug- or revisit this in August and and?
Yes.
Okay. You guys think that's what we kinda wanna do? Yeah.
Yeah, that that would be my, that would be an option. I'm gonna go ahead and just give you this one little caveat, and that caveat is this. Remember that because it's a common, a commodity, that changes every single day, the pricing, from yesterday to today to an hour from now. That change, it changes. So if anything happens, you know, we have an incredibly hot summer. That will cause the rates to go ahead and go up. And when those summer rates go up and the winter rates go up, that's when, you know, so when I price it out again in November, you know, let's say, um, you know, September or October, while you're riding on a market rate, getting a very, very cheap price right now. When that time comes and I price it again, who knows where the market will be at that point?
No, fair enough. So the co- the contract offer will change at that point. It's not like, it's not like, you know, we can opt in uh on this anytime we want. Uh, so, okay. Yeah, I I think, wouldn't we wanna revisit it maybe late August and it just kind of, you know, uh, we 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 hear what you're saying. But it seems counterintuitive to be paying, you know, locking into a contract that's nearly twice the rate of what the market is.
Well, it's, remember, that's only today's.
Yeah, no, 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 I, yeah, I understand.
Yeah, okay. That's, that's fine. I, and I'm perfectly fine with that. Um, I I really am.
Do you guys agree with that?
I'm looking right now, just out of curiosity.
What do you think? Yeah. Okay.
Here, here's an example. Uh, your, your actual usage, based upon your last contract, in August, um, let's see, in June, you used, but we're going into July. So you used two-hundred-and-forty-eight therms. In January, you used nine-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty-five. So you can see, you know, if you do a weighted average, two-hundred-and-forty-eight therms at forty-five cents, well, that's really cheap. But if you go ahead and take nine-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty-five, that whatever that market rate is, whether it's ninety-five cents, a dollar, whatever it is, that's where, that's what that happens. So.
No, I hear what you're saying, but actually, Bob, haven't you even made our case stronger to ride it out during the summer? Because the, our usage is even smaller. So even if it go, if it does go up incrementally um over the summer, um, we aren't gonna be suffering as much by using the market rate because our therm usage is lower and and.
Right. Other, other than the fact that, remember, you're always buying futures.
Yes, yes, I, yes.
You were to go ahead and, and if you write down, uh, in fact, it's in the, in the book. So when you guys have a free moment, go onto the internet, look up the NYMEX settlement, and you can go ahead and find, or NYMEX natural gas. When you look up NYMEX natural gas, it'll give you real-time uh pricing, and it'll, now, that's not our pricing. Because there's, anytime you price something and give a fixed price, there's many components involved in that. But this is just to give you an idea, you'll be able to watch where it's going. But when you look at that NYMEX uh uh chart, you'll be able to see that, uh, for instance, right now, there's what they call the prompt month, which is uh July, is trading at three dollars and eleven cents. And if you go ahead and go into this January of of this year, of January of twenty-five, it goes from three dollars and eleven cents, in January, it's up to four dollars and twenty cents. And then a year out from there, January, it's four dollars and fifty-nine cents. So just, you'll, you'll see that, and I, I am perfectly fine. Why don't I just go ahead and, and I can make a note? And how about this? Why don't, why don't we just leave it at this? I'll go ahead and, we can reach back out, Lisa and I will touch base back in, you know, toward the end of August. In the meantime, if I see any really nice movement or any bad.
Yes, yes.
I'll send you, I'll send Lisa a quick, you know, a quick note as well and say, hey, just by the way, market's moving this way or that. And that way she can let you folks know, and you can, you can maybe, you know, uh, you don't, I don't want you to miss anything.
No, I, we don't wanna miss anything, but I also don't think we want, I think we'd like to lock in before the election, probably. I, you know, I just, because, again, I'm not saying one way or the other, but it's going to be very volatile. And I don't think we wanna be riding that roller coaster, so.
I agree. Even if you decide to do a very, you know, a twelve-month agreement or a ten-month agreement at that point, at least it gives you through, through a little bit of a storm.
That's a good point. Um, yeah, um, Bob, we just had um somebody who wanted to make a comment.
I just, um, I thi- I believe we're also looking at, looking into heat pumps and changing our heating system, which means we're gonna be all uh all-electric. Which I'm not wild about myself, but.
I mean, how, what else would be using gas and?
So nat- yeah, natural gas primarily, as far as uh the city is concerned.
I don't know if the, what the other, maybe the the other buildings, um, senior central.
Yeah, can you maybe gather some info on that so that we could get, okay, but that's a good point, Ian. Um, okay. All right. Well, thank you so much, Bob. We really appreciate your time and attention to detail, and we appreciate you being such a good partner to us.
Oh, my pleasure, and I do appreciate all of your time. I know I took a little bit more, but, you know, at any time, if you guys, if any of you have questions, pass them along to Lisa, Lisa will pass them along to me hopefully, and I, and I'll be happy to, to get those answers to you.
All right. We hope to see you towards the end of the summer.
Some good you all.
Okay, you too. Bye-bye. Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Hi, Bob. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, that brings us to host community agreement. Ms. Green.
Okay, in the packet, um, we have a host community agreement. Um, over the past, past couple of years, the um Cannabis Control Commission has come up with new regulations regarding host community agreements. And the host community agreement that we had with Emprestell LLC was actually reviewed by the CCC, who found it to be non-compliant with the new regulations. Um, so basically, what we have now is a new community host agreement. Uh, this was looked at by town council. Um, it's been reviewed also by Emprestell LLC.
And the Cannabis Control Commission is the one who, who suggested this?
They, yes, they reviewed our previous uh host community agreement, and they did find it to be non-compliant.
So they found it to be non-compliant, and then who drafted this revised one?
Um, we, the, the um CCC has a template.
Okay, all right.
And this, this dra- this um derives from the template.
And do we know what's changed? Like, what's, what are the high points of what's changed?
So what you'll see is um basically a community impact fee. Um, basically, under the new regulations, there is no community impact fee.
Right, so, so the bill of goods.
So, well, because they came up with new regulations that specified a community needs to justify having a community uh impact fee. Uh, meaning that because the business is located in town, we've seen an increase in, say, crime or um, you know, drug overdue.
Which is hard to do if it's a manufacturing.
Exactly, exactly. So we couldn't justify that. Um, the, let's see. Basically, that is the most important one. Um, is the community. Most of the other terms, um, mainly talk about the company's compliance with the, with the laws. Um, this doesn't, but we had a lot of things about, um, you know, uh, when they came before us, about them making sure that they had odor. Um, like, do those agreements still, do, do some of the stipulations in that agreement still apply? You know, that we expected them to monitor, they had to ju- I mean, I know some of it was just in keeping with the CCC regulations. But in particular, we wanted odor mitigation to be, you know, uh, something that folks, that they really focused on. Um, I just wanna make sure that we're not losing something from our prior agreement that even though this is a template from the CCC, they may not necessarily be aware of, oh, there is something in here about odor control. Well, I'm on a soapbox, Mr. Gell.
Continue.
Okay. Um, okay, I will step down after myself.
You, uh, what I did.
Yeah, there, there is odor control right here. Yeah.
Oh, yes, there, yeah.
But I, I'm just wondering, because we did negotiate that contract. Um, but you, Kate reviewed this, I assume she also looked at our prior agreement.
So, um, actually Liz Lyden, who, who works a lot with this.
Oh, that's true, yeah.
Um, you know, she's been very up with the um CCC change in regulations. She reviewed this.
Okay.
Um, and I do know that they are, um.
Don't have a deadline?
They have been moving, you know, um, monitoring their odor control. They had a new rubber roof put on, they've had new systems put in. So, uh, they, they are watching the odor control. Um, they've been reporting that to us.
Okay.
So I guess, I guess our, this wording is no more lax or lenient than the previous contract, I guess.
No, no, this is essentially what it said, is that they would install the right materials. Because I, I was very focused on this. Uh, Mr. Benardato and some other folks have really expressed a concern about um odor. And I thought, you know, that's right. If I lived nearby, I wouldn't wanna be smelling that all the time. Um, and um, although some people enjoy it, to me, it smells like a skunk. Um, so, uh, you know, so we had suggested that, um.
Oh, in the early spring, it was quite fragrant.
It was. It does seem to have gotten better. I, I noticed I was driving by in the spring, and I was like, holy moly.
Yeah, it was bad.
And, and, but it's, I, so you're saying that they've taken some mitigation measures on their.
Yes, they have, yes.
Um, and they know that, you know, um, that they need to be good neighbors or, or it's gonna be a problem. So, um, okay. Um, did anybody have any other questions about this? All right, uh, then I will entertain a motion to, um, you're the one executing this, right, on our behalf? We entertain a motion to, um, have, to empower Lisa Green to execute this agreement, um, on our behalf.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? All right, great. Thank you. Um, MBTA community, um, so, um, we had our last town meeting, which we seem to be reliving over and over again. Um, we had the MBTA community article, um, which is required by the state. But the town voted, um, not to adopt, um, what had been proposed by the planning board. Um, and at the time, there were, there was an amendment that was offered, and I think, um, a bit hastily. I, perhaps it had been offered in a little bit in advance, and people hadn't been able to digest it, they may have embraced it. Maybe not, I don't know. Um, but I know that it was done in the spirit of trying to send a message to the state um and to the legislation that, um, we, we think this is an overreach. And we think that this is, um, you know, the state, um, telling a little town, um, what they ought to look like and be like, and we don't appreciate it. Um, so that message was, um, rather resounding at town meeting. And it's our job to represent, um, you know, um, the citizens and try to be responsive to, uh, the messages that we hear, to the extent they are reasonable. Um, and that kind of, um, Mrs. Rain had shared some information with me, um, and others, um, about, um, some lawsuits. This says class action suit, but it's not actually a class action suit. There are lawsuits. Um, so I had asked Ms. Green if she could do a little skullduggery, um, find out, you know, who the attorneys are that are representing these people, what the status is, what the costs were, um, all of that. Um, and so that's one kind of like tranche. And then the second tranche of this was, um, even though town meeting voted not to adopt that amendment, I think it was more of a, they thought they had to pick a swim lane, which was, we're against the MBTA community. I don't think anybody truly would have been opposed to us sending, uh, uh, correspondence to our legislation, um, telling them, uh, we think this is an overreach and we'd really like you to revisit it. So that's our second piece. And then the third piece is, if all of these things fail to effectuate any change, um, you know, think about at some point in time, and it doesn't need to be now, um, is it a matter of us getting people together to take another look at this, more of a, like a all-hands-on-deck type of thing, not just the planning board, um, on what can we do to redesign that area if we're going to be forced to have that area? What can we do to redesign it so that people are feeling more comfortable with it, but that it's still compliant? Now, maybe we don't need to take that third step quite yet, so we can sort of table it if you guys want. But Ms. Green, do you mind giving us an update on your research and what you found?
Yes, so, um, I did reach out to the, to the attorney who, um, was, he's representing the town of Milton. Um, so he has filed, um, a motion to dis- documents, motion to dismiss the AG's claim against the town of Milton with the Essex Superior Court. Um, I did reach out to him, and, uh, he did say that, uh, there are currently eight attorneys, um, who are working with some different towns. He did name them all, but I, I, I did not write all of the names down. But, um, and they, they are actually representing the towns, um, on a pro bono, um, type of a basis. So that's wonderful for the towns. Um, that means that they're not charging for the services. Um, they are looking at this, they are looking at this from a number of different legal aspects. Budgetary is one, um, and then some zoning is another one. Um, he did tell me the town of Middleborough is doing an amicus brief, um, that they will be filing with the Essex Superior Court. Um, the town of Taun- the city of Taunton is also joining in with, with an amicus brief as well. Um, so he actually has offered to come to our June twenty-fifth meeting and speak with the board, um, about basically everything. Um, you are correct, Madam Chair, there is not a class action lawsuit yet. Um, but that, um, is something that, um, the court can consider, uh, based on all the different legal arguments the attorneys are putting forth on this. Um, so he will be speaking to us from that and, um, you know, to answer any other questions. Um, he is, he is based out of Linfield, so he will be traveling from Linfield down to, um, talk with the board on that on, on June twenty-fifth. Um, and that will be an executive.
Okay. Well, we appreciate that, that, that research. And just to be clear, um, this is us preemptively coming at the state. This does not mean that they, that they're going to work pro bono for us when the state comes after us. Um, so just wanna be clear that we will have legal fees for that. Um, so, um, and should it come to that. So, okay, well, that, I mean, you know, I don't know that they're, I mean, how do you guys feel about that?
I, I think it's, it's gonna be nice to have that, and then I'm gonna go to this thing in, in Pembroke the next night, shaking up suburbia, encroaches of the MBTA multifamily zoning right to shelter, and to San Bruce is gonna be there. It's gonna be an interesting meeting.
When is that?
It's the twenty-sixth.
Okay.
It's Pembroke Rising.
Okay, I thought there was something today at this time.
Is everybody welcome?
Yeah, everybody's welcome. Absolutely.
I won't have to be thrown at me or anything.
You wanna come? I'll protect you, don't worry.
I appreciate that. Um, yeah, I would very, but I have seen some of the presentations. Um, yeah, I would very, but I have seen some of the presentations that, you know, have been shared online.
Yeah.
Um, you know, the different degrees of quality, I would say, um, but, but I, I think, uh, Mrs. Saba-
Well, this looks pretty respectable.
Kind of alluded to it tonight.
Yeah.
You know, this is just yet another unfunded, overreach, you know, and, and it's getting nauseating, honestly.
You know, it's interesting, as I heard a lawyer talking about, there was actually a home rule provision, I, I think it's an amendment to the Conole, the Massachusetts Constitution, in 1966, that was specifically addressing the fact that the state cannot force towns to change zoning laws, to do anything.
And that was part of the argument that, um, I don't know if anybody actually got up at town meeting and said that, but I did bring that up to, um, our town council, and she said that there's been case law and subsequent chains and guidance, yada, yada, yada. So this is probably part of what these attorneys are fighting for.
Right, exactly.
Is to, is to, is to push the envelope and see, you know, where, where does the court wind up on it? Uh, what, yes, Mr. Hill?
I, I, you, you mentioned see and not doing see yet, which is the setting up a group.
Well, I'm just throwing it out there, whatever you guys think, I don't know.
I just, there are people that want to get involved, and we don't have to organize it. But if we did, would it be more organized?
Well, the, the, the people can't, they can get it, we want them to be involved, but they're not going to be-
People can do it studying.
Setting up zoning options.
No, just to be, just to be clear, so if, for instance, if we did decide to move forward to it, and I'm totally open, like, whatever you guys want to do, we, we will do. It's the will of the board. Um, but I, I think, um, where I kind of was coming from was, I think it would be helpful for us to get, you know, to send the letter,
Mm-hmm.
Get some more information about the lawsuit, and then I think we'd be in a better position to figure out, like, are we really up against it, and we have no chance of fighting the state? Um, and if that's the case, then, then we have to go to see. And, and I think to Mrs. Rain's point, although people may be frustrated, those people may not be the people that are going to want to redesign the area, because they're just fundamentally against it.
Correct.
So I don't know that they're going to want to, you know, help redesign the area if you're just fundamentally, realistically against it. Um, so, so you guys cop a static with that? Everybody's okay with that? Um, so, um, Ms. Green, um, could you work on crafting a letter for us to send to the legislature?
Oh, yes, yes, actually, um, they, some, some of the other towns that have crafted have shared that, so.
Okay.
Yeah, we-
So we could have that for the meeting on the 25th, Jim? Okay, that would be great.
So it comes from the select board instead of the town?
It comes from the select board, uh, which, which honestly, even if that vote had passed at town meeting, we would have been the ones sending the letter.
Right, but it would have been coming-
It would have been subject to the town meeting vote, but, yeah. Which would have been more powerful, but that's okay.
Yep.
You know what, we're still voted in by voters, so we still do have the backing, at least I like to think we do, um, occasionally, um, of the voters. Um, so, okay, that's great. Um, thank you so much. Um, Whitman, Hanson IT proposal, Ms. Green.
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, uh, so I did, um, I did meet with the town of Whitman, um, on possibly sharing IT services. Um, and, uh, their IT employees, Josh McNeil and Steve Burke, did join us for some of the meeting. There's a lot of details to be, uh, worked out as far as, um, money and things like that. Some of the points that were brought up were, uh, based on, basically, the IT market right now, um, they did say that we will have a difficult time hiring somebody at the salary that we're offering right now. You know, unless a boots-on-the-ground type of person, a tier one, I guess, you know, fresh out of college, and, um, that not, might not necessarily be the best move for us to bring in, uh, boots-on-the-ground, fresh out of, out of college.
So are you saying with our budget, we couldn't share the IT resource?
No, that, that's what we're, that's what we're going to try and work out, yeah. I mean, we review, we, we were looking at the, uh, agreement that we had when we were sharing with East Bridgewater, um, and I did get some of the figures from Eric, and now we need to see how we can work that. Um, you know, there's a lot of reservations on Whitman's side, because they don't want to feel that their IT people are now all of a sudden focusing on Hanson, and they're losing out and things like that. So, um, there are a lot of, there, there, there's a lot of details to be worked out, but, um, it-
We're covered now, right?
Yes, we, we do have help, um, outside of work hours from, from Whitman.
Plus, we, we were in an agreement with East Bridgewater, what happened to that?
It just didn't work out, it just-
Yeah.
I, I will be honest with you, a lot of the shared services agreements always caught, we've had it with the building inspector, we've had it with veterans agent. And, and one town always feels like they're getting short shrift. It's very difficult to keep track of whether they're equally dedicated to both of the towns, and inevitably, somebody is, got the louder voice, and they get more services. So, uh, we've tried this, we've tried it with animal control, veterans officers, I mean, it's an awesome idea. Like, personally, I'm all in favor of regionalization and shit, resource sharing wherever the hell we can, uh, to get, you know, to get things done cost-effectively. But in a practical manner, it just hasn't worked. I'm not saying this won't work, I totally applaud you giving it a try, um, but at some point, if you think that, um, it's not going to get legs, and we in fact are going to have to hire our own person, um, then I think we're going to have to look at something at the October town meeting. Um, so kind of let's keep that in mind for timing, and hope that Mr. Burke can keep his little tap shoes on, and, you know, we can keep things chugging along. It's a critical role, um, and, and it's particularly critical, like, we want the new website, and I know Ms. Bragg is helping us on that, um, and that's awesome, and we're so fortunate that we've got somebody that's as talented as she isn't, who can help us. But, um, you know, we may have other strategic things that we need an IT person for, and we know when we went to the, um, the disaster recovery, um, you know, planning session.
And you were at that, right?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, one of the big things that kept coming up was IT, IT, IT. You know, it's a very critical part of our disaster recovery. Um, you know, storing records, you know, how, how do we, if there's a flood or some catastrophic event, how do we recover from that quickly? IT is like front and center. So we can, you know, we can kind of like, um, you know, hobble along for a bit, but we, we do have to make, you know, kind of, and, and if we need more money, then just come to the board and tell us. Look, in order to get the quality and caliber of what we need, we need to have X more money.
Right, so we most likely are going to need more money, and I will start analysis, um, but just, you know, what we were, what the two Whitman IT spec, we're, we're talking, um, you know, people are expecting anywhere from 120 to 150. Um, and I think we learned a very good lesson on just having one person in charge of IT for the entire town.
Yes.
Um, and that is going to be a challenge as well. Somebody doesn't want to come into town knowing they're the only one, I'm the only person. Um, that may be a challenge, and that may be why we don't see the candidates, because nobody wants to be just a one-man show, um, where they're, they-
Right, there's, you need to have redundancy. Yeah, you need to have redundancy.
You know, we, we, we just cut the part-time IT position, and, and that's not looking favorable. And I'm, I'm just telling you what I'm hearing from-
No, we need, we need the full-
The IT people, um, out there, and, um, it, it's going to be tough unless we're able to come up with more money and really have a two-person show, um, you know, staff. Uh, that's something that, that Whitman was, was suggesting, again. Uh, you know, Steve Burke is very well-known, he's very well-respected, he knows, and Josh McDale is as well. Um, they, what they were suggesting is that we do bring on, like, a tier-one person that would be, um, located in Hanson to maybe deal with computer issues, a phone issue, or whatever. Um, and then we have our, our Josh McDale and Steve Burke, who are the more experienced IT, who will deal with our cybersecurity, our firewalls, our email servers, and things like that. So they will be focusing on the more complex as our, um, you know, IT specialist, so to speak, will be, will concentrate on the day-to-day.
So it's a hybrid, it's a little-
It's like a hybrid, yes, yeah. Um, so, you know, that's the direction we're really going to need to go in, and we will be having, um, the company that's doing the cybersecurity assessment coming before the board in an executive session to present their findings.
Okay.
Um, and, and, you know, we will, this will open up the whole world of us, where we are with IT.
Mr. Hill?
I really, I mean, just, if I was a brand-new selectman, I'd say, oh, wow, this sounds like a great idea to do. It, it bothers me sharing between, like, like you were saying about sharing people between, um, towns, and, you know, it, I'm, I'm more, couple things. If it doesn't work out, how will it, how hard will it be to get out of it? The, and, um, are there contracting firms or anyone else other than the, the town, than, than doing it at the town level?
Yes, you can outsource it, we have done that before.
Yeah, is that, is that an option, or does the Plymouth County, um, have something?
So we, we have outsourced before, there are towns that do it, um, outsource. But again, you don't have a dedicated person.
Right.
You have an IT issue, you call an 800 number, or you call, you know, whatever number, you put in a ticket, and then you wait for someone to call you back. Um, you don't have a dedicated person, and we did find with the company that we were using that we were not getting the services that we were paying for. Um, so that's why, you know, having somebody that's focused, that's dedicated to Hanson is, is a better direction.
You know, I like, I, I, that, that is a good question. Does Plymouth County offer? I know they're doing the cyber, cybersecurity, like, awareness type of thing, and they're doing the, um, review, but do they offer support services?
Not that I'm aware of, I can certainly reach out and see.
Can, can you?
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
And if not, put a little B in, in Tom O'Brien's bonnet, and ask whether that's a thing that they might do.
Because then you'd have-
Because they're looking at that.
An IT department of like 10 people, but they're for 10 towns.
Right, right, yeah.
Covering each other.
Okay, so-
We can certainly look at that, um-
So no vote needed tonight, just more info, you know?
Yeah, more info to come.
Okay, all right. Um, uh, I think the board and town administrator goals, um, what do you guys think about perhaps kicking that can down the road and doing that in June, uh, 24th?
Sure, do we appoint Phil Fleming?
We already did that, yep, we did do that.
Kicking it down the candle, when?
June 25th.
Okay, yeah.
Did we?
You said June 20, 25?
No.
Did we do all, all the Camp Kewaunee ones on three?
No, we didn't, uh, Camp, yes, we did all the, um-
We did Camp Hornet, we did Camp Hornet.
Yeah, we just haven't done the appointments yet on the next page.
And we did approve the Whitman-Hanson tennis team thing, but-
Yep.
Yeah, we did do that.
All three of those.
I missed that, right.
We did all of that.
We'll try to make it more exciting next time. Um, so Camp Kewaunee appointments, um, Ms. Green, um, I noticed that Margaret Cameron Hickey is the Camp Kewaunee Beach Director, but she's also the Camp Kewaunee Water Safety Instructor and Lifeguard. Is she getting paid for two positions?
I will have to check, I'm not sure if she's getting paid for two positions or not. Um, I will have to check and see how they did the-
Aren't they opening this weekend?
Yeah.
So-
We also need to check and make sure all their, the lifeguards are actually certified. They have not given me, they haven't, let's see, they've got, they've- We have to make, check and make sure that they've all taken the, um, lifeguard certification as well, um, because we don't have any of that information.
Okay, and, um, and do we typically do these as appointments?
The, yes, the board did it.
Okay, all right, it just seems strange, because it's a hiring, but I don't know why we're doing this as an appointment, but, okay. Um, okay, so-
That's two different people.
Oh, Margaret Cameron Hickey?
You have 18, number 18.
Number 3 and number 18.
Yeah, number, number 3 and number 18.
Oh, okay, I was looking at, I was looking at number 6.
Oh, it's a different, different-
Oh, yeah, just, yeah.
Um, it's, um, okay, so I think we can, I guess you'll have to get back to us on the Margaret Cameron Hickey.
I'll find out.
I don't know that we have a super huge choice here, because the, they're, the camp, the swimming is opening on the 16th.
16th.
And here we are, tick tock. So, um, I think we could, um, make a motion contingent upon you, um, verifying that they all have the right certifications. Um, I, I have to believe that the, um, that the recreation, you know, that the Camp Kewaunee, um, Commission has done their due diligence. They, this isn't their first rodeo, they know what they need to do, so. Um, so I will entertain a motion to, um, make the Camp Kewaunee appointments as printed in our agenda, contingent upon Ms. Green verifying that all of the proper, um, certifications and, um, credentials are in place.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, uh, any further discussion? All in favor? Great. Um, I will entertain a motion to approve the May 21st, 2024, May 28th, 2024, and May 30th, 2024 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Great. I will entertain a motion to approve the one-day liquor licenses, 61424 for Amanda Howley, uh, 7624 Melissa Smith, 91424 William Breckwald, and 11224 Kevin Ferrant.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, fantastic. Any hot and burning committee updates that anybody feels a deep desire to share with us?
No.
Okay, that is a good answer. Um, okay, that would bring us to the town administrator. Oh, yes.
For the McQuone property reuse, I just wanted to let you know, I reached out to the school, they don't have a calendar set until July.
Okay, well, yeah, just, just- Put a pin in it, and I guess revisit it in July, and we'll, thank you for letting me know that. Um, okay, Ms. Green?
Okay, um, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board. So, um, as you remember, uh, the board voted to allow for ARPA funds to be used, um, towards the Pratt Place culvert repla- repla- repair plate replacement, duh. We did have a kickoff meeting, uh, this week with, uh, Verdant, the engineers from Verdantis, um, and they did start speaking of, um, you know, their thoughts on the culvert and things like that. And actually, one of the most important that we need to, um, address is the access for the residents of Pratt Place. Um, obviously, when the culvert, um, slash, bridge is removed, they're not going to be able to get from, you know, their homes. Um, obviously, when the culvert, um, slash bid, bridge is removed, they're not gonna be able to get from, you know, their homes.
Four houses down there.
Yes, so, um, there.
Mr. DeFrayis wants to talk to you about that.
He wanted to talk to me? Oh, yeah, it's okay, um, I mean, it's, we're still gonna go in the same direction. Uh, so there is, um, there is George Street, I guess, which is on the other side, um, of Pratt Place, that they're going to look at possibly, um, some of the residents there that, that have woodland, allowing a temporary easement that would allow folks to, to access, um, Pratt Place from that, from that angle, area. Um, there, there's letters to be sent out, you know, we, th- this is just the, the very beginning, but.
We're not gonna be paying for that easement, right?
We won't be paying, but there will be possibility of, um, a, um, a, um, real estate tax discount on the value of the land that's being used. Um, and that, I, I did talk to, um, Nigamash and, and Devise Alexander about it. Um, so there, it's called a functional, oh boy, um, it, it functional something that allows.
But it would just be temporary, right?
It's a temporary, yeah.
We're gonna be talking about big, big dollars here.
No, 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 exactly, and we're not talking about a long period of time, we're talking about a week to two weeks possibly. Uh, because what they're possibly looking at is everything prefabricated, fabricated, so they come in and they just lower it down, so. Um, you know, we're gonna try and make this as less inconvenient as possible, but, uh, there'll be more to come.
Are we gonna meet with the citizens on Pratt Place, who I hope.
Yes.
Are appreciative, but may not be while there be inconvenience temporarily, but I just wanna make sure that we've got very open lines of communication with everybody, they know what to expect, they know that there's gonna be some inconvenience because, you know, this is money we could've spent in a million other ways. And we chose to try to do that.
There's one thing I, I, it just keeps rolling around in my head, um, what is the land like that's around Pratt Place? Is it developable?
I don't know the answer to that question, I know that there are some wetlands around there.
I know there's, I saw the wetlands.
Yeah, so conservation is involved.
So is it mainly wet that the man?
I, I don't know the answer to that question, honestly.
I think that's a valid question, I kinda think I know where you're going.
Yeah, that's where I'm going.
Um, can we just, um, get a sense of the topography of that area?
They are gonna do all of that.
I think we don't want it to appear, um, as though the town is doing something that might.
Benefit somebody.
Benefit one or more individuals who might want to develop a piece of, pieces of property down there. We don't, I don't even know who owns anything down there, so this is all purely speculative, but, um, I, I think we would want to know that.
Yeah, I mean, this basically is just replacing the culvert, the bridge. Um, so as far as developing any land, no one's looking at any of that, we're just looking at how.
Right, but you can see how doing that would make that property.
More valuable.
Exactly, yeah.
The value of the property beyond the bridge or the culvert.
Yes.
Okay, so, yeah, I, I will, um, I'll ask conservation on how, what the wetlands are and things like that.
Okay.
Um, we, we are gonna be sending a letter out, oh, I'm sorry.
Um, you mentioned conservation, are you working closely with conservation? Cause I know there's new ways of doing culverts and making sure they're wide enough and not intrusive to.
Frank Skellender, yes, he, he was in the first meeting and he will continue to be in meetings as well, yes. Um, so he, he will be working closely with us on that. But there's more to come, um, Tony DeFrayis is, he's, he's putting together a le- a letter that we'll be sending to all the residents on this, um, and there will be discussions, we will have a me- information meeting, so more information to come, but it, you know, we, we had the kickoff meeting for this. Um, also, uh, Capital Strategic Solutions, the folks that helped us with getting, um, off the ground with all of our social media, um, we have reached out to them, um, and asked for a proposal, um, bring them back again with, um, as much educational information, um, and social media information they can on the override, um, to provide as much education.
For next year.
For next year, the next override, um, so we are waiting for a proposal for them. And we do have some ARPA funds left over, um, to pay them for this service.
I think that's a great idea, cause this is gonna be a very steep, uh, learning curve for people to understand what the money's gonna be used for, why it's needed, what happens if we don't get it. And I think that's more than we can really, as a board, um, you know.
Yes, and they have, they have, they have a really good understanding of that, um, they do have some retired, um, town managers on their staff that have gone through overrides and have a lot of ideas and things like that, so. Um, we're, we're, we're looking for the proposal, um, on that. Um, and I do, you know, again, I, I wanna, um, I wanna, uh, give kudos to Tony DeFrayis. He successfully submitted eight applications for the One Stop Grant Program. Um, I mean, these applications are 30-plus pages long each, so he submitted eight of them. Um, in hopes that we are still, you know, where we're still compliant right now with the MBTA, that we will be considered. Um, and basically, he submitted grants for the Hoxav, the Brownfields cleanup, um, which the quote we have, um, from Verdantis is $237,000.
Which we're not gonna have the money to do.
Right, so he submitted a grant to clean that up. Um, he also submitted a, um, an application for the Hoxav, for the, for the front building, um, for underutilized property of $700,000. Um, a 212 Industrial Boulevard, I believe that was a site-ready, um, which is $70,000. Again, 228 High Street, which is the Plymouth County, the hospital building, the front building, underutilized property, a million dollars. Um, housing production plan, $40,000. Main street sidewalks, which we, we did get a grant for, for the design, $197,000. Um, open spa- space plan is $60,000, and the 40R district assistance, um, for that area, looking at the 40R, um, at $90,000, so it's, it's almost 2.4 million in grants that he applied for, so.
All of those are things we so desperately need.
Yes, exactly, so we're gonna, we're gonna really keep our fingers crossed and, um, you know, lots of prayers. Um, so kudos to him for submitting all those. Um, the highway director position has been reposted with the new salary, uh, we've expanded the territory, um, through Capital Strategic Solutions, they're placing it on the American Public Work Association, um, website. Um, it's in the Whitman-Hanson Express again, it's on our website, it's on Indeed, and it is on, um, the Mass Municipal Association website, um, with the highest salary. We've gotten no responses, um, so.
Oh, would you get one?
Okay, we've gotten one, um, so.
Do we have a deadline, or is it just?
Well, we, we had, um, June 24th, um, I mean, unfortunately, um, our intro Kurt McLean is not here forever, so. Um, we're, we're doing the best we can to get people in.
Mrs. Rain, I think Mrs. Rain.
Um, no, I, I was just, I, I was, someone reached out to me about that position and asked, you know, I don't wanna say names, but. I think they were one of the two people that applied before, not sure.
Well, speak to Mrs. Green because, um, she and Mr. McLean had reviewed, um, the, the candidates and for different reasons, um, didn't think either one rose to the challenge there, so. Um, Mr. George, did you have a question, or are you just?
No.
Okay.
Um, all right, so, um, and, you know, we are, we are, um, busy every day with, with the special town meeting preparations for Monday, June 17th, so, um, Hanson Middle School is confirmed, uh, senior transportation is available, um, although, um, our COA Director Mary Collins has noted that no one has yet signed up, but the service is available. Um, we do, we do have, um, the, the childcare is available, the no-cost childcare is available. Um, we've already did a public announcement to the Whitman-Hanson Express, and the message boards have, um, the announcement for the special town meeting, so. Um, we have our little board up here in the town hall at the front door, people will see as soon as they get in, it's on Facebook.
Are we gonna be all set with, uh, having the overflow in the gym?
We are working with the IT.
And I, I think that's something you're gonna wanna mention to Sean too, uh, because he's gonna need another teller or two. Um, if, if it, you know, if, if it gets to that volume. Um, and we're gonna make sure we've got enough printed material.
Yes, about 600 we're gonna print out.
Okay.
So we're gonna make sure of all of those things.
Okay, awesome.
We've been very busy with all of that. Um, so really great news, the ARPA funds for the fire department for the new ambulance were approved. Um, so they will be coming, um, I think July, um.
Nine?
The ninth, July 9th, to present the check, it'll be 440, 448,024.
And speaking of ARPA, I rustily recall you mentioning that there may be additional ARPA funds beyond what our little town was allocated, that other towns may not have used, and that there was a little bit of a surplus. Have we probed a little bit into that?
Well, they don't know exactly yet, because there's still, um, basically, there's still, uh, some deadlines the towns have to take. Okay, so, um, by June 30th of 2024, um, you have to at least provide them with, like, what your budget is.
Okay, very.
So, you know, Verdantis right now is working on a very preliminary, um, construction quo- quo for Pratt, Pratt Place.
Okay.
Um, and so we're going to forward that, if it, if it is higher than what we have left, I'll, I'll see what we need to do to put in a request for any additional funds they might have.
Okay.
So, you know, we got to put.
One thing I, I thought, um, for our next meeting, um, could we get a little bit of commentary from the Board of Health about transfer station stickers, didn't you say that the last meeting? And we still haven't gotten any official memo, or at least I'm not aware that we have.
No.
Um, you know, um, as far, I, you know, and I haven't seen anything on the signs, on the boards. There is at the, at the transfer station itself, but generally throughout town, there isn't anything saying that, you know, that, um, you know, tran- and, and similarly, I haven't seen anything about dog licenses, um, in, in our announcements. I think there might be something on our town hall sign, or there, I saw it someplace.
Isn't that September?
No, it's July 1st.
Oh, July 1st.
Yeah, yeah.
I thought it was September 3rd.
So can, um, can you just check so that we've got, um, cause you know, Mr. Hill's looking for things to read, so if we could just get a couple more items to put into the announcements?
Sure, yeah, and, you know, right now, our, our boards do our, our advertising town, special town meeting.
Sure.
But as soon as, you know, Monday comes and goes, we'll be able to put other things on the boards, like the transfer stations.
But I haven't even seen like, uh, um, a Facebook post, and, and it may just be that I'm missing out on it, and it's out there and they're doing all these things. But I haven't seen, you know, also, like, um, there's those emails that go from different departments, and I sign up for the Board of Health one, and I haven't seen anything from them on that, so I just haven't seen anything. I'll, I'll reach out to, to Ms. Diaz, but, uh, but if you can check too, um, cause I, I just wanna make sure that, um, you know, the transfer station guys aren't getting people, you know, uh, with pitchforks there when they try to show up on July 1st and they don't have the right sticker.
They, they are telling people, when you come, that, remember to get your sticker.
Um, absolutely, um, let's see. Uh, also, just wanna remind people, the town hall will be closed next Wednesday, June 19th, in recognition of the Juneteenth holiday. Um, and also, uh, as, as far as ARPA, I completed the, um, Q4, uh, fourth quarter reporting requirement, um, and that requires us basically to stay compliant with Plymouth County, so that all, you know, our applica- further applications will be considered. Um, and also, I'm in the midst of completing all of our insurance, um, applications for the, um, July 1, 2024 to July 1, 2025, um, year. So, um, I've been busy reviewing the applications and signing multiple pages, um, so that is underway. And actually, that completes my town administrator report for this evening.
Okay, that is awesome, did anybody have any questions, Ms. Green?
The only one thing I had is, um, for June 19th, that does include any committees and everything else, town hall is totally closed.
Yes, it's a, yes, it's a holiday, so town hall is closed.
Just wanna make sure that everybody was aware.
Yeah, good point, um, okay, um, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn, and we're going to go to exec- executive session and not return. We're going to, uh, to open session, we're going to executive session pursuant to Open Meeting Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, Town Administrator, Deputy Police Chief, IT Director. Or executive session pursuant to Open Meeting Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body in the chair, so declares litigation discussions. Executive session pursuant to Open Meeting Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body in the chair, so declares highway and administrative, uh, executive session pursuant to Open Meeting Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A7, to review and approve executive session minutes not to be released May 28, 2024, I will entertain that motion. So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you very much.